Hello, let's start. And then before we get into any substance, we'll wait for Matt.
Okay.
Okay. So. Um, is it recording?
Yes, it's recording.
Okay, call me to order. Uh, Scott and I are present, we expect Matt very shortly. And we'll start with Clint. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Uh, no members. How do I know? Um, the minutes, uh, well, actually, let's do the minutes, uh, well, let's do. Give any comments?
No, I'm not very.
I'm gonna wait for Matt, see if he had any comments, uh, we'll do the minutes. There is, hey, Matt.
Hey, guys, good morning.
Sorry, I wasn't gonna do anything of substance without you, but, um.
All good. No, sorry, appointment just went a little long.
Yeah. How was your trip?
It was great. Highly recommend Spain.
Yeah, I mean, Spain, it must've been hot, right? I mean.
It was very hot, but. Beaches were beautiful.
Yeah, you weren't in the Azores again, were you?
No, we were in Mallorca this time.
Nice, okay, I know we're. We are recording, so I don't wanna, um, get too far into it, but. Sounds great. Um. Okay, uh, Matt, do you have any comments? Hit you right up.
Um, have you, you haven't commented on anything yet, have you?
Not.
Okay, I think, I just wondering, uh, if we've heard anything more from, uh, Mr. Kadama on the point.
Um, so. Here's where we are with that about. Two weeks ago, they said. And I'll just say publicly, uh, could you send, send us? So we've gone back and forth with iterations of the contract.
Yep.
And in one of those, we put in there basically a right of first refusal, in other words, if the leases, uh, if the lease is assigned. The town will have first option to. To acquire the. Acquire the lease. The lease is where the value is, uh, because it goes on and on, um, and. They had. Were not agreeable to that. And then we put it back in and basically I said to them, this has to be in there. They came back and they said, could you resend the language? And I said. You have it. But I did resend it anyway. And that was about two weeks ago, and I've heard nothing.
Okay.
All right? Literally, that's where we are.
That's where we are. Okay.
And not. And I, I'm, you know, I. I have sent them an email, I have not had a response, and I, nothing goes into my junk mail.
Okay.
All right?
Okay.
So, uh, I'll comment on. A few things, um, just give me an ARPA update, um. You know, we have to spend all the money by the end of. Calendar year two thousand twenty-six. And it looks like through July, we've spent about two million of the three million. Right?
Yep, that's right.
Uh, two million. Uh, twelve thousand short of two million of two million nine hundred and sixty-four thousand, so. Um, I don't know if any of you have been over to, um. Kitterdale Beaver Dam Trail, have you guys gone over there to check out that project?
No.
This is the Beaver Dam Trail culvert, and you would think they were building I ninety-five. Uh, and I'm not saying that they're making the mountain out of a molehill, I'm not saying that, it's work that needs to be done. But. You're replacing a culvert for a stream. And it is a massive job. Uh. The equipment in the road, the, uh. The culvert itself. It's, it's incredible construction site, they are making. Uh, swift progress. In fact, they anticipate by the end of this week. Some of the most difficult, whole culvert will basically be in. Then there's some backfilling, and then they have to, um. Do each end of it. Uh, but they're making, according to Jacobson's office, who, they do construction administration for us. Uh, they're doing really well, uh, I don't know if, Matt, I'm sure you have seen, uh, Chalkers Mill Pond Dam. So that also, that project also is going very well, they're waiting for some concrete pieces, so. That project is in a bit of a lull, but. A lot of the project is done, they are waiting for basically the fishway for the ale wires. Um, and then that was gonna be about two weeks, and that was about a week ago, so I anticipate. That construction will really get moving next week towards conclusion. The homeowner. Uh, as you go down the Ingham Hill Road, and you look to the right where this project is happening, you see a berm for the dam. And it really looks, it looks beautiful, uh. You know, when, when it's all cleared out now, it. Looks almost inviting. And the homeowner made that comment that, you know. This berm. Is about six feet from the back of their house at, in certain spots.
Yeah.
So the homeowner has requested potentially some sort of barrier from the road. To where this berm is, and I think, um, it is reasonable that the town would address that concern. For the homeowner, so I did get a quote. From a fence company. To basically continue a fence, the homeowner has a fence. And then we would continue that fence. So that. If people are walking along the road, or if you are on a, kids are on a bicycle, they're not gonna say, hey, let's. Ride onto that berm. Um, so. I have, it's three thousand dollars, it's not a huge amount of money, there is a contingency in that project, or. There really hasn't been any contingency costs in that project, so that project's been moving along really well. Uh, there is a hiccup. On the potential start of the Route One sidewalks project. I don't even understand it all, I'm gonna get an update, Frontier has a duct tank. That had to be moved. And that involved, as a result of that, some drainage that needed to be moved off Route One. And there's some issues there that they have to figure out, somebody has to figure it out, engineer it out. Uh, I am. Not entirely confident that project will. Either start or certainly not finish this year. It could start, and I talked to the contractor, which is Leyden. Construction, uh. And I said to him, even if that is not complete. You can still start the project on the Westbrook side. Which was the original intent anyway. Uh, and get a lot of the sidewalk done, so. They're gonna consider that. Even if it means not completing the project prior to, let's say, November. So there is a couple of things that need to be done there, uh, we do anticipate work on the crosswalks on Main Street. Starting. Next week possibly. Uh, and, uh, I know that. Uh, the, uh, Old Sabre High School, they, uh, the Old Sabre Schools go back, I think. Two weeks.
Monday, right, that's totally.
No, a week from Thursday, right? Is that right?
Yeah.
Or maybe.
They go back on the Monday, so the twenty. Slip, so, twenty seconds.
So we can.
That Monday is.
Anyway. Uh, so, look, this construction will be. Disruptive to Main Street, but there's just no way to do it, we have. Two lanes, a median, and then two lanes, and you have to go. Across two lanes, through the median, and then to the other two lanes, so. The way this is gonna go down is they're gonna close a lane going north. You're gonna continue to have one lane, then they're gonna close the other lane, you're gonna be able to use the one they just did. Uh, it, it's going to be. Probably a little bit slow. And a little bit disruptive, uh, I anticipate. That work will continue after Labor Day, I don't think that's a project they're gonna knock off in a week or two. But it is scheduled to start, and I anticipate that will be done, I'll be by the end of September. Uh. You know, it's really remarkable how all these projects that we've been talking about. And then we have, of course, you know, Route One sidewalks, and then the Ferry Road soccer field. Where we just got the grant, and those projects, I, you know, five projects are gonna be done probably. By May of next year, that's a lot of money out the door. The Trails Grant at Sabre Point. Is definitely going to be delayed, uh, we are. Going out to bid for fixing the seawall very shortly, just to get a number, there, we have several. We've talked to several engineers on that, they have some good volunteer engineers, in addition to Jeff Jacobson's office. Who's helping us with the design of the entire area. So we're gonna go out to bid on that, uh, the wall needs various. Versions of. Reconstruction. At various sections. And we won't know, we won't know entirely. What needs to be done until you get in there. So. We're going to have, we're gonna put it out to bid. With some options for the contractor. We think the area closest to Minigolf, so this goes from Minigolf north. Towards Gardner's Landing. The worst part is from Minigolf. To where the deck is currently.
Yeah.
After the deck. There's more work that needs to be done, we do think Gardner's Landing, that seawall needs some work, but does it need to be? Completely reconstructed. Uh. So. That. Project, that is a work in progress, um. I would anticipate that maybe we could consider getting something done in the winter. Of twenty-five, twenty-six here, that's a good time probably for the contractor to work. And, um. And then I'm hopeful that we can then. Start the Trails Grant next year, but we will see about that, uh, that project is tricky. Because the seawall, uh, and, and we'll see what that's gonna, that's gonna cost. Um.
Okay.
So, uh.
Carl. Just on the, on the Main Street crosswalks, I'm not sure if that's something that we can coordinate with the, um. With the Board of Ed and the schools in terms of just giving awareness, especially to middle school. Um. Families that there's gonna be that construction going on, just to. In, increase awareness, so that, you know, to, to ratchet down any, any complaints.
Yep, so, uh, what I'm gonna do is confirm the date that the contractor plans on starting. And then we'll do a press release, and I'll make sure that Chris Dressy can sort of get it over at the school, so they can look at that out.
Great, okay, thank you.
Might, might send people. A different way. Um.
Yep.
Let's see, uh. Just, we got that DOH grant, we're working on that, uh, Matt, you're aware of that, and, um. Just so you know, when we do the crosswalk project, after it's complete, is when Bill Claffey plans on going in and repaving all the parking stalls. Uh, that money is set aside, ready to go, but he feels that it's better that the crosswalks be done, and then the paving can. Be smoothly paved right up to the crosswalk. Uh, and he feels that is the best way to do that. So.
Okay.
And just to give you guys an update on some miscellaneous cash balances. Are the cannabis fund, which is the fine federal. Um. Store, we have two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, uh, in that designated account. That is, in addition. That's after we spent about sixty thousand to do a survey of Route One, just to see. What the boundaries of the right of way were, uh, so that is still throwing off about nineteen thousand dollars a month, pretty consistently. Uh. The opioid fund, uh, is money we're getting from. The class actions against the Sackler family, McKenzie. Uh, CDS, everybody who touched. Oxycontin back in the day, uh, and, and allegedly abused it, we are getting. Continuously. Settlement monies from that. And in two thousand, four thousand, five thousand, two thousand, and we just keep getting tranches, and. We have eighty-eight thousand dollars, eighty-nine thousand in our opioid account, opioid fund. I am, uh. Charging Heather McNeil largely with trying to figure out how to spend that money on prevention and awareness, uh, and. She is aware of that, maybe at some point she can give us an update on some of her efforts. Uh, the small bottles revenue, we have about forty-three thousand dollars. In that fund. Uh, as you guys recall, we get five cents per nip from the manuf, I think from the manufacturer, from the bottler, essentially. Uh, we are spending that money, we are using it to do. Uh, food scrap recycling at the transfer station and at Goodwin School. Uh, so that money is being deployed to. Uh, increase awareness of food, food scrap recycling, and also to. Dispose of food scrap recycling. I'm gonna ramp that up a little bit, I may. Hire a food, uh, a recycling coordinator for five or six hours a week to do further education. Uh, so that we can lessen the amount of food that goes in the waste stream. All right, so that's just kind of a broad-based update of a few things that are happening in town and revenues and projects.
Um, great, Carl, can I, can I ask a question to go back to the ARPA money?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, the money that's left, is that all money that we? That the town is spending on projects? Or is it money that we, we still need to distribute to sub recipients that are gonna spend?
I can tell you, a lot of it, Beaver Dam Trail, six hundred and ten thousand of the million.
Oh, okay.
Uh. We are still waiting for some DPW equipment in the amount of a hundred and thirty thousand. Uh, the AP, the Acting Public Library Generator, we have another fifty thousand dollar payment, by the way, that, that generator is going to be installed within the next two weeks. So that project will also be complete. Cypress Cemetery hasn't spent any of their money, that's about eighty-four thousand. Um, EDC has about forty thousand left to spend economic development. And social services, about thirty-seven thousand, those are the big numbers. All right?
Sounds good, thank you.
So you can, we're gonna eat up a lot of that money relatively quickly. All right, uh. Approval of the minutes from July twenty-second. I'll make a motion, is there a second? Second. Any, any, uh, issues, discussions, comments? Here, no.
No.
Okay. Aye. Aye. All right.
Aye.
Um. Before we get into the business of the board, I wanted to make, I want to make a motion. Matt, you received my email from yesterday with the surplus recommendations?
Uh, I received it, but I only just saw it this morning.
Okay, well, we'll discuss it, so, uh, I, I'd like to at least add it to the agenda for discussion and possible action.
Should I make a motion if we add that to the agenda?
I'll second that, um. Any comments? All those in favor.
No.
What?
I was gonna say, yeah, happy, happy to add to the agenda to discuss.
Yep. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Um, let's just do a couple super quick things, um, some business. Uh, possible, item A is conversion of the seasonal dwelling to year-round occupancy, six-three Plum Bank. I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
In discussion, this goes through health and building. So, uh, that's signed off on. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we have two bonds, B and C, so I'll make a motion that both B and C, uh, have the release of their encroachment permit bonds, I'll do, we'll do those together. Um, is there a second, second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Um, I'm gonna. Turn it over to Leanne to start the discussion on surplus, and then we can talk about the recommendations.
Okay. So the surp, just in general where we are with the surplus is, we have a very similar. Path to this year as we did to last year. Our total surplus for the town is of just under three point nine million, three million eight eighty-eight. Um, that is broken down into two, well, actually about four pieces, but, um, I look at it in terms of, uh, revenue surplus. And in expenditure underspend, I call it expenditure surplus, but I mean the money that hasn't been spent, and then the Board of Ed and the town. So mainly on the revenue side, the surplus is, is mainly attributable, attributable to what happens here at the town, you know, it's, it's. Uh, revenues are very difficult to project, um, we cannot do that with the accuracy that we do with the expenditure side. And, um, last year, um, our revenue, our surplus revenue of two point eight million. Was driven, um, we had almost a million dollars extra in taxes collected. Um, again, we budget ninety-nine percent, and that is one of the highest ratios, if not the highest ratio, um, by, budgeted by municipalities in Connecticut, so. We usually typically do get some sort of a surplus, also past year taxes are collected in that amount, and when we have good economic times, like we are enjoying at the moment. Um, people tend to pay their past due amounts. We were very accurate when it came to state revenues, we were almost on the dime, um, we were, um, budgeted five twenty-five, and we received six fifteen, so we had, um, a, a surplus there of about just under a hundred thousand. And again, this year, same as last year, the big driver was local revenues, and that is where we budget interest income. Uh, we added, uh, one, we had, um, an actual about one point two five million in interest income, and we budgeted six hundred thousand. So, um. Um, that's where the, the, the driver of that was, but also, you know, uh, uh, building permits and, um, tech, uh, the, uh, um, my gosh.
Uh, Town Hall.
Thank you, I was thinking City Hall, but I knew that was the Town Hall revenues too. Um. So in terms, um, of expenditures, both the Board of Ed and the town, um, had an expenditure surplus of, of about one point one million. Uh. Pretty well, um, even, the, the Board of Ed had four hundred and ninety-six thousand surplus, and the town had five hundred and forty-eight thousand. When it comes to the town, um, the, and the expenditure surplus, as I'm sure you've been hearing all year long, we have. Um, had underemployment at both the police department as well as DPW, we found it very hard, we are finding it very hard to fill those positions at DPW particularly. And so of the five hundred thousand, um, three hundred came from public safety overall, not just the police department. And two hundred fourteen came from the Department of Public Works.
Um, just one comment on that, public safety. Except for the chief of police is fully staffed, right now. Just so we know that. DPW is still down one, maybe.
Yeah, one, I think, they're down one, so we had some luck there. Um, and then just one last comment before we talk about, uh, what to do with the surplus, I just wanted to mention a couple of things. Number one, we, as part of this year's budget, we transferred a hundred thousand dollars. To, um, the Park and Rec Strategic Fund, that was part of the budget project, uh. Uh, budget process, and so that is not included in the revenue surplus, that has been transferred. And, um, for this fiscal year twenty-six. All of the revenues from Minigolf are now going directly to the, um, Park and Rec Strategic Fund. And also for this year, uh, we have raised our estimates, our projections for interest income from six hundred thousand to eight hundred thousand still. You know, obviously lower than what, um, we, we actually received this year, but, um, we have taken steps. To reduce the, um, uh, to increase the revenue budget, um, slightly, and, um, and hopefully next year. Our revenue, uh, will be. A little bit tighter than it is this year.
And when, when you look at. What's going on nationally, even internationally, I think Australia, I read this morning, just lowered their. Uh, reserve rate or their funds rate, two, two points, I thought I saw it now. And as you saw at the Federal Reserve in, in this country, we had a governor resign. So Trump's gonna fill that. Lot of pressure on Powell. So, interest rates are gonna come, probably come down, whether that's good or not. I make no comment, might not be good for inflation. Um, but. That is probably the trend, which means lower interesting.
Right, did you want me to go on the surplus recommendation?
So, uh, we, no, that's fine, so that's where we are with, uh, the surplus, so. I passed out a memo to you, what? Please. Input from the Board of Finances, to be honest with you. What we did this year. Couple years ago, I don't know if you remember, we had twenty-seven recommendations. Which is great, we knocked off a lot of little stuff. Uh, and. This year. One of the members of the Board of Finances, uh, George Cheng, who, by the way, was a good comment, said, you know. We have these capital projects that we're talking about, let's see. Maybe we can take a bigger swing, and you see that in here. Uh, with the recommendations, trying to, number one, narrow them down, and maybe take a big swing at one. Um, and we'll get to that, so the recommendations. As we've narrowed them down is to. Initially fund two hundred and seventy thousand into the Town Geriatric Day Fund right off the surplus. So that we keep the reserve fund at seventeen percent. You know, Moody's loves this, they upgraded us from double A two to double A one, we, you know, that's a big deal, let's not understate that. And they, they, you know, whether. Whether we think the surplus is either too big or too small or just right. Moody's was very specific. They liked the continuous surplus. Funds coming in. And. You know, whether. You know, I, I'm not gonna state an opinion as to what other people think, I think it's a good thing, it allows us to knock off. Uh, projects, I don't think we're overtaxing, I think it is truly. On the revenue side where we've tried to be relatively conservative, but I won't go on and on about that, so. Uh. Item number two on this recommendation. Is to fulfill our promise to the public library. To fund them six hundred and fifty thousand dollars if they need it. They are, by the way, I hope everybody's going to the comedy fundraiser on August twenty-eighth. Just so you know. I was able to secure a. Twenty-five thousand dollar. Grant that. The person anonymously said, I'd like it to be matched for your comedy fundraiser. And it was matched, Amanda, Amanda found somebody to match it, so right off of that, that fundraiser has raised fifty thousand dollars. Whatever they sell for tickets. And, you know, you'll be able to pay the comedians and make a few more dollars, so. Um, they are, I think, making reasonably good headway. One other quick comment, they did apply for a foundation to become a nonprofit. And through that nonprofit, it has not been approved yet by the IRS, but once it is, that's when they plan to do a raffle. And then with the raffle, they hope to raffle off a vehicle and make. Certainly another couple hundred thousand, I think that's the hope. And if they're able to do that, I think they will meet their goal of raising two million in non-municipal funds. Um, so once they raise two million in non-municipal funds. The town already put aside a hundred thousand. This would give it another six fifty, so they'd be at four million seven hundred and fifty thousand. And that doesn't even include, uh, another donor who's willing to basically step in. And finish the project for them. Over and above that four point seven five, so. They're in good shape, I think, to get their documents in order and go out to bid in fiscal twenty, or calendar year twenty-six. So, um, that's. So um, that's recommendation number one, no, recommendation number, well, three after. Uh, on this document is to put aside. Uh, Matt, I know you brought this up in the past, put aside a hundred thousand dollars for resiliency projects because uh. That way we'll have the money available. Once, you know, right now we're doing a study. Once that study is complete, presumably, we'll be looking for money to. Construct or move forward with a project. And we'd like to have some money in the kitty for that, so that if we do get a grant. We won't be able to, probably won't be able to fund any project on our own, because I'd imagine it would be. Um, relatively expensive and this would allow us to have some money aside for matching. Um. Item number four is twenty thousand for the probate court renovation. I think I said this last time, this is probably more than the town's share will be. But it's going to benefit the town of Old Saver more than anybody else with our new office space. Uh, I I assume that after this twenty thousand, we will ask the rest of the towns for their share. Uh. Set aside two hundred and fifty thousand for other post employment benefits, so we we put aside about forty thousand a year.
Yes.
Into an off budget fund for other post employment benefits, so that's pe- that's paying people out. For their vacation days, sick days. What else, anything else, vacation and sick?
Um, yeah, well, anything, that's any, any, any payment after they retire.
Any other retirement benefits when they resign or retire. And of of course, on September one, we're gonna have a much larger. Um, the chief, the former chief of police uh, is retiring. And uh, other than any agreement we made with the chief, uh, he was entitled to a relatively significant. Payout as per his contract. And this money is needed to at least get this fund back to even. So that we can put this, get this squared away and um. Just get back to even and uh, meet our obligations with regard to the chief.
Uh. Quite, quite, just a quick question there?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so that that basically just the the fund's gonna go into the red, so this on. September one, so this brings it up so that it is just even. What do we normally maintain for a balance? In the fund, if somebody else decides to retire, you know, during during the current fiscal year?
Yeah, so that would be a particular issue, uh. We put aside about four, we don't maintain any certain amount in that fund, Matt. These people retired or people don't retire and the fund grows and then the fund goes down, so it goes up and down, but. We into, we, up to this point, it has been uh, enough money to meet our obligations. Um.
And there's not that many. Now, there's not that many longer term people that would have big payouts either, I mean, obviously if. They all went at once, it would cause a little bit of a stress, but um, you know, we don't foresee any huge obligations. On in the on the.
That we can't, we don't see anything that we can't meet, we're not concerned about this, look, thi- this was. A unique situation.
Right.
A unique contract, a unique contractual situation. Uh, where we're in this position and we need to put it behind us and move on, so we're making the right. Let's not forget, these are recommendations to the Board of Finances. So that they can. Take a look at this next Tuesday, so Leanne can close the town's books on fiscal twenty-five. Um. So we put ten thousand, item number six is twenty thousand for HR consulting services, we put ten thousand in the budget. For fiscal twenty-six this year, so this will give us thirty thousand to spend this year on HR. And then in the budget next year for fiscal twenty-seven, is my intention to put. Another twenty thousand in the budget, so fiscal twenty-seven will have thirty thousand dollars budgeted. And um, we'll see how that number does us, uh, but we've been using them and. Leanne, I don't know if there's anything you wanna mention on, it kind of like a current project that they're doing.
Right, so they did an assessment and they gave us a list of things to do, that so we've been working from that list to kind of uh. Make sure we get all of our I's dotted and T's crossed in terms of HR. And they have, they're working on a scanning project to scan all of our HR files so that they can be secure. On online, that's one project that's that's um, very much needed. And they're also um, giving us a quote for updating the employee handbook, which hasn't been done in a while. And then the third thing would be to take a look at updating our HR manual, so all of those are big undertakings that we we can't do. On a normal course, be- because we have other things that we're working on and it's gonna be really. Great to have them with their expertise uh, completing those projects of this.
So that was that, um, number seven is set aside ten thousand dollars for the America two fifty celebration. Just to put a marker down on that, every, Matt, I think you probably know this, the former Secretary of State, I believe, is. Spearheading an effort to have every town participate in some way, shape or form. We have the library, we have the Historical Society, we we have the Economic Development Commission. Uh, we're working on a bunch of different things. Um. I have in here to set aside forty thousand dollars for additional traffic control for roadwork. On either the Route One sidewalks and the Main Street crosswalks or other projects. Um, because I think it's going to be needed as we. Go into this construction season, um, this year and next year. Um. So the next two items are essentially the same, or not the same, but we're combining them, Leanne, wanna give?
The next three, actually.
Uh, next three.
So um, over the years, we have um. Been taking a, making a focus on our long term liabilities, our debt, which are our debt service, basically our debt service and our pension reserve. And to a smaller extent, our capital, because if a project is too big, it then becomes something that we bond for and it becomes debt service. And so in an effort to also um, keep our budget. From spiking or having, you know, one year up, one year down, we create these reserves. To um, mitigate that going forward, so that we can offset some of the costs in any one particular year and smooth things out. That's how we use these reserves, the situation is, is that, well, we'll have a debt reserve, then we had a pension fund reserve. And so now we're saying, let's just have a long term liability reserve and put a hundred thousand dollars in it. And that way, um, we can use it to keep our uh, to manage our mill rate over the upcoming years. And the next two are in addition to that, um. Per currently, we have about three hundred and fifteen thousand in the pension reserve fund. Let's put it all into the one reserve, to the long term liability reserve. Um, secondly, we have um, created a long time ago, um, a WPCA debt service reserve, which has ninety-two thousand in it. And again, put that um, into the long term liability reserve. The WPCA debt service reserve was something that um, we put in place about five or six years ago. Uh, um, and that is uh, when uh, somebody that has a benefit assessed on their home. And they somehow were able to leave without paying it back, although there, you know, there's liens on the houses, I think it happened. Just initially while we were getting the program together, um, and we haven't used it in years, and so it's just sitting there, but. Should we have a situation where um, we we couldn't make that payment, that would be considered, that would be used for that, that um. That particular situation, so we wanna combine all of those into one, one reserve. At the end of the fiscal years, if we have monies left over from surplus, perhaps we would continue to fund this um, over time. Um, again, to to be a budget management tool going forward.
So, uh, I'm gonna make a comment on this also, that uh, this is something that, I don't know if. And if you have listened to Board of Finance meetings. But John O'Brien has. Raised an issue with regard to the. Surplus over the last few years and how can we use the surplus to? Um. Tangibly uh. Assist the taxpayer, tangibly, is that right?
Yeah.
Tangibly?
Yes.
Uh, two, uh, for some reason that didn't sound right to me, uh, assist the taxpayer and show the taxpayer. Hey, yeah, we had a big surplus, but this is how it's going to assist you moving forward. So the fact is, we're gonna have some bonding coming up, um, we're we're, we have to do the Public Works Garage. And you see that in the next item. That is probably. A four to five million dollar job, it just is. I. You know, any way you slice it, it just is. Uh, and that is not being fancy. That is just giving them enough storage space for their equipment and giving them. Place that they can go to, clean, eat lunch, wash their hands. Have a little kitchen, have a shower if they need it. Um, I've seen the design, it's nothing fancy, so we're putting. You know, when we go to market to bond. Uh, we might use this long term liability if there's a small spike in the mill rate uh, in in the bond debt service. So in other words, if our debt service is three million this year and it would go, we can ask our finance person. To say, structure the bonds, so that we have a spike in year one. We can put, eat the spike with, let's say, two hundred thousand from our debt reserve and then. It falls right back to where it was, and then we're back to where we are, just trying to keep our debt service level funded. Um, so. We, Leanne and I were looking at these various reserves and it was Leanne's idea, I think, to just create one. Long term liability reserve, which would. If the pension fund. Uh, if we were unable to meet our actuarially defined contributions, I know employer, I know it's ADAP, not ADC. Or something, and you know, we needed to put in another hundred grand that year to make our contribution. We would take it from this fund, so the idea is to. Fund this fund, use this fund, uh, when we need to use this fund. So that there's some debt service management and may, and maybe some pension management, so. That's how you see it, any questions on that, I I hope that was reasonably clear.
Yeah, um, I think it, for me, it's clear, the the reason for the long term liability reserve fund and com-. Combining them, I just wanna be clear, Leanne, items ten and eleven, then, those are not surplus funds, those are. Funds that are already in off budget accounts that we're just moving as part of this whole recommendation.
Correct, they are not surplus funds, there, we're gonna move and put them all in one bucket.
Thanks.
Yeah. And then uh, I think I talked about the. We said, let's take it, you know, let's take a big swing, let's, um, the DPW garage, let's. Put some money down and it'll create less, less of a bond payment on it and uh. Use some of the surplus funds to. Create maybe some savings to the taxpayer by paying cash for part of the project. Similar to what we did at the school twenty years ago.
Yeah, so I I I understand the the logic that you're laying out with. With the Department of Public Works Garage and I I appreciate as well that we're taking a big swing. At something, um, I guess, based on the number that you just said, you know, if we're pushing a five million dollar project. And on the Public Works Garage, it's it's the shovel readiness of this project. Versus, we also have been talking for many years and been putting money in, finding ways to put additional money into the park and rec. Um. Off budget capital fund, where, you know, we have the the work on Town Park is also, I think, gonna be a. A five-ish million dollar project and I.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I think. No, okay, I might have, I might have that wrong.
That was more like one and a half, or to high toward pushing towards two, it was not five million.
Oh, okay.
Unless I'm mistaken, but I never saw that number.
Yeah, and and I might, I just might have numbers flipped around, but I I, my point being, are we? You know, what's the most shovel ready, big project that we could, we could completely fund? And get into the queue and start to work on um, versus, you know, and and it kinda goes to. An item down below as well with the the Board of Ed, um, HVAC, you know, is that? Fully fund that project, I mean, I would like to, instead of just putting a big chunk towards something, can we actually? Gets, get a project done that we can, you know, go out to bid on in the next, you know, year versus just parking money. For another two years, which is what. Which is what it feels like, unless my sense of timeline on the DT, DPW garage is off, it feels like. It's gonna be sometime before we go out to bid for that, I, you know, I'm not saying that we don't need to get that done, but I also wanna do something that. That taxpayers feel that that surplus is going to work for them as a benefit sooner than later.
So um, with the Board of Ed, I can't speak to that, I think we're gonna have to have. Uh, Pam and Chris in next Tuesday to talk about where they are with regard to HVAC. I think the DPW garage, we already have a concept design, so it's literally a question of. Putting some, uh, getting an architect and doing the design and. Putting it out to bid, I'll bet that can be done this winter and into the spring. I I think we are looking at a bond, probably next summer for. This project and maybe another project, combining it with another project. Um, I believe the estimate on, and now I'm gonna switch to Town Park. If that estimate is one point five, then let's say it's two million. Park and Rec is gonna have that money. They're gonna have that money over the course of the next two or three years to fully fund that project. There's no question about that, because they're probably generating now three hundred thousand a year.
Uh, so the mini golf fees were a hundred and fifty thousand, so that's going in per year. I don't know if it's three hundred thousand, but um, but in in addition to that, that's the part that was coming, that was the five dollar part that was coming to the town. They already had a two dollar part that was going, so.
Right.
May- maybe it's two hundred thousand, um, I'd be a little bit more conservative, but it's a lot.
Yeah, it's two hundred grand a year and they, I don't know what they have in that fund right now.
Yeah, they've got a lot, like, I think it's about a half a million, they're pushing.
They'll have a million dollars by the time that is ready to go to, basically, ready to go. And so I I I think that project. Is going to be able to be paid for with cash. From their font, from their sinking font, I really do. Um, and I'd say that both these projects could probably. Be in the ground or at least started, I would hope sometime. Maybe a year from now, um. Maybe next fall and maybe they push into twenty-seven, but they're darn close. I mean, field work you probably don't wanna do in the winter, although I'm not sure, maybe you do, maybe you can't do it. But obviously DPW, once that goes out to bid, it can be done. I I'm relatively confident that project will be a late twenty-six project, that DPW project. That's where we are, we're we're pushing that on a track. And I'm leaving it to Ray, if you wanna get an update from Ray, you know, I'm. Maybe we can have Ray in here, maybe we can, you know, I can also contact, reach out to Jeff Jacobson and see where they are on that. I know, Matt, you've been talking about it, I agree with you, I wanna see that project get done myself.
Yeah, I. You know, it it's hard, cuz I don't wanna, I don't wanna like, put it, put it in the position that I'm arguing that one thing is more important than the other, I mean, at the end of the day, it's like.
I wanna interrupt you one more time, okay?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. This is not the only money we have. Alright, so let's also, big picture. This is what we're suggesting for part, for a DPW. If if mi- if um, Park and Rec has a million dollars in their account next year. And they need another half a million dollars, the town has another half a million dollars to give, to finish the job. Right, from our capital not recurring fund. So it's not, it's it's not a a zero sum game there, we have other funds, in fact, at the end of this, we're putting. Four uh. Well, how much more?
About three hundred and fifty, I think.
What is it?
I think it's three fifty.
We're putting another three fifty after all this in the capital not recurring, which will take that balance over three million dollars.
Two and a half million.
Two and a half, what?
About two and a half million.
Two and a half million dollars. So there's money for Park and Rec when they need to do that project, in addition to the funds they have. However, with regard, I think that project's a smaller project, so I would suggest. That we pay for it through the Park and Rec funds and capital non-recurring. As for the DPW garage, I think that's a project, that's a, it's a forty-year building, maybe fifty. It should probably be paid for partly out of a bond. Um, make your case, I mean, Matt, I invite, I mean, you, I don't know if you're gonna be able to make the Tuesday meeting or not, next Tuesday.
Yeah, I'm going to prioritize it, for sure.
So, and maybe I can get an update for you on cost and timing?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think it would be great to have an update on cost and timing, you know, it, um. I, I think, again, you know, putting money towards the project specifically, like we are with the, um. With the resiliency grants, right? It's, it sends a signal that we're trying to prioritize this and get, and get this moving, and. And I think that on the park side, you know, Public Works, the, the guys need the garage, we need that as, as an amenity, like. You know, for, for the workers and the work that needs to be done, everybody benefits from that, but I think that there's a lot of. There's a lot of improvement to our park facilities that people see when they're participating in. Adult softball and youth sports on the weekends, I think it's high visibility and there's a, there's a lot of recognition then from. The taxpayers, that this is something that the town is pushed to get done for them as a benefit to living in Old Saybrook.
So, I would say we have prioritized it, and I'm gonna say we prioritized it. Um, with a lot of your encouragement and Scott's encouragement, Scott formerly on Park and Rec. You, 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 I think this board has been a champion for Park and Rec. We are now diverting hundreds of thousand dollars, you know, a year. With past surplus money, we have made many improvements to our parks, many. And we're gonna get Ferry Road and Clark Park done in the next year and a half. That's pretty, that's pretty good. Those are gonna be done. So.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that, that's all I got.
Um, yeah, I would say it would be, it would be good if we had the, the, the accurate number and timeline um from Ray. On, on that project, so, so we have it just in the same way that I would request that we get that information from Board of Ed as to whether or not the, the rec. The recommended number in item fourteen gets them to the point that they can go out and move forward on this project, or? Do they need something more?
I don't know that it does, to be honest with you, but, um, but we'll find out. All right, um, and thank you for that, and then, uh. So we have three of our four Big Belly trash receptacles deployed, we have. One on Main Street, we have one over by the pickleball courts, we have one now at Kavanaugh Park. We have one more to be deployed onto Main Street, and Bill Claffey loves them, Ray Allen loves them, uh. We are, the, the idea here is to um eventually save money on. Tip fees that we're spending with Always. Uh, Always goes around and does all our garbage pails. Uh, the Big Bellies last a lot longer in terms of having to be dumped out, and our guys can do it. Because it's not something that needs to be done twice a week. It needs to be done maybe twice a month. So it's a much more efficient way of collecting garbage. It will prevent a lot of garbage dumping, I believe. Um, which happens now in Kavanaugh Park, certainly down at the point, so, um. I'm gonna tell you what I plan on doing, and whether it makes it through the next budget cycle or not. I think we need to make this a budget item. I think we need to budget. Year over year over year to deploy these Big Bellies, because we, we bought four of them. They've been a success so far, Bill Claffey and Ray Allen think they're excellent devices. And I think having these deployed all over our town. Or wherever we need them is probably the way the town should be going, because, um. It's a very good, clean way to collect trash. So, that's what I'm recommending. This will give us four more.
What's interesting is I, I've been in Newport for about twelve years now. And they had those way back then, and, and I remembered when. Was I was just even parking a wreck and getting on here, it was always wonderful, that might be neat for us, but. Their cost were here, and so I think it's a good idea to.
They're about seventy-five hundred per unit. And that's trash and recyclable, so. We spent thirty thousand last year. Um, so, all right, so that basically gets us. Through, uh, the, the two Board of Ed items are three ninety-eight for HVAC. This is, this comes from the schools.
Correct, yes.
And a hundred and fifty to the capital sinking fund, right?
Correct, they, they, they wrote a memo um to the Board of uh Finance requesting those two amounts.
So that'll be for the Board of Finance to consider next week, so. Those are the recommendations, uh, we need to get this in front of the Board of Finance, okay? That's what we need to do, um. And so the Board of Finance can either act or not act on this, um, and then, um. They can, uh. Do what else they wanna do. So.
I made a motion that, uh.
We recommend this to the Board of.
We recommend the, the fifteen recommendations that you presented facts on. That we've seen many times over the year, and I recommend that we make that motion.
And, and I'll second that, noting, uh, you know, Matt's. Concerns with regard to Park and Rec, uh, and. Prioritization of certain projects. Um, that, you know, Matt, I don't know if you wanna vote for or against this, that's however you choose is fine, um, but. I. I'm quite confident that, that Clark Park project, whenever it's ready, and I, I. I don't know what the delay is on that, I know that they were changing the design a little bit, because Little League got involved. They were originally, I think, not gonna have any field, baseball fields there. And I think Little League went in and said, no, you need to have some field, so I think the design changed a little bit. I could be, could be wrong about that.
I heard that, about Little League, I hear that whole thing.
They actually came to me and they were a little concerned about it. So let me get, um, the estimate on Clark Park, let me get. Let's figure out, uh, how much money Park and Rec has in their sinking fund. Um, let's figure out how much money they're taking in every year that is being set aside for them. And I'll get it, an idea as to the timing of Clark Park, and then. It, it's.
That would be great, and if I. I was gonna say if we could also get the, the figures from Pam and Chris on the HVAC project at the school.
Yeah, I assume they're gonna have that next Tuesday, I can't, I mean, that's. So, you know, don't forget, also, whatever, whatever Park and Rec has in their account at the end of this year. You know, now, by the time we're talking about this next year, it's gonna be, they're gonna have a full year behind them, another full year behind them. And then if it's going into construction in the fall or the spring of that year, you know, so that's. I think there's a very uh optimistic funding stream for Clark Park. Personally, um, and I'll see how we can uh structure that, if we have a hard number and how we might get there, all right? Moved and seconded, any, Matt, do you have any, any other things you wanna add?
No, I, I think I've, I think I've made my, my thoughts clear, and it's not that I'm, and again, it's not that I'm against what's. Being recommended, it's just, it, it's just some additional information and, and prioritization, so I'm, I'm gonna vote in support of this, and I'm gonna. Go on Tuesday night and we'll hear that information, and we'll see what the Board of Finance wants to do.
Perfect. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye, aye, aye. And those opposed, yep, all right, uh, that passes unanimously. Think that's the end of the agenda, anything else? All right, second, all those in favor?